Yeah, we'll add it. All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting of the Isanty City Council to order if we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you want a roll call? We have everyone present except for Councilman Merrill is out of the country right now. Do we have any public comment this evening? Hearing done, we'll move on to adopting the agenda and we did want to make one modification was to discuss the property at two seven eight six eight Polk Street Northeast. And we'll add that as K six. Okay, any other modifications?
Mayor, if we could make that K two, and then we will renumber the remainder of the business items, if that's okay?
Sure. Any other modifications?
No, there are not.
All right.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries four zero. Let's see. We have the city council meeting minutes that need to be approved from January sixteenth, and we also have the committee of the whole meeting minutes also from January sixteenth. Any questions on those?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from both of those many meetings. I have a motion to approve from Councilman Heeman and a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries four zero. City offices will be closed on Monday, February nineteenth in observance of President's Day. We have our committee of the whole meeting coming up on Tuesday, February twentieth at five P M. Also on the twentieth, we have our planning commission meeting at six P M. City council at seven P M. on the twentieth. And we've canceled the Park and Recreation Board meeting that was scheduled for Tuesday, February twenty seventh. Do we have any council committee reports?
I, I went to the community education meeting. We talked about those catalogs that everybody gets, and those are eighty-five cents a piece with the mailing. And then one of the issues that they were having was they had thousands of them come back and didn't get delivered. So they were working with the post office on that. One of the discussion items was they were gonna make signage. One of the ideas was to make signage in different languages because the population of students who were learning English increased to about three percent. So they wanted to make it into a more inclusive environment for everybody. So that was one of the discussions. And then the bike trail meeting I went to seemed pretty short, not a lot of discussion, a lot of talk about the boards on the bridge being replaced. And then county commissioner asked if there was ever a foot traffic assessment or a structural assessment on that bridge. Does anybody know, or is that a Cambridge deal, or?
Typically, the city of Cambridge does do the organization of different studies with that. I believe that there was an integrity or some kind of assessment assessment that was done to determine if the boards, how long they would last, because some of them were warping and they were replacing some here and there. I'm not aware of any foot traffic study, to my knowledge.
Okay, but that was the only two questions, and then that was about it?
You know, that bike trail, I've seen a lot of people walk that thing. I know I won't. It's too flipping hard, but yeah, I've seen a lot of people walk that thing, and I've heard them talk about it. You know, one of the problems is when she's talking about warping boards, green treated lumber, it turns into banana after it starts to dry out. So, you know, they might maybe eventually maybe look at using something like that Terra Deck boards, or you know, the Trek boards, something that's a little more resilient to those issues. Just like, you know, when you build a deck, you know, you're green treated, they, you know, you could put them a quarter inch apart when you put them in, and two years later, they're three quarters of an inch spread because they shrink and twist. So, I mean, that might be an alternative down the road to maybe curb some of those problems.
Is it getting ready to replace, they're saying?
No. Commissioner Berg was, was appointed to this meeting this time, so it was his first time also, so he was just curious. But I, I was wondering myself if there's ever been, he wanted to know how much it was used. And then with the bridge being over a swamp for the structural integrity aspect of it.
Pretty solid. I've been across it a few times.
Yeah, recently?
No, not recently.
So, but yeah, he was just more or less bringing it up, just, you know, to get ahead of some of the problems that might, may come down in the next few years. Yeah, that's all I have.
Those meetings usually last, I, I used to be on that one, and so it was about seven minutes or so, and that was the only thing you usually talked about was, you know, financials a little bit, and then replacing the boards on the bridge.
Yep.
And trimming the trees, I guess, too.
This one lasts about fifteen minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't last very long.
Yeah, but it, it's a nice trail, though. It's, it's nice to have the, the joint partnership there with, with, with everybody, so. Any other council committee reports from up here? Otherwise, I think Luke could send in some that Josie's gonna read, so.
All right, thank you. I'll share these on behalf of Councilmember Merrill. The Chamber of Commerce had some late discussion regarding the county comprehensive plan. They are still looking for residents of Isanty County to provide input, and which this study and plan is essential for the future direction of the county. A couple of members of the Chamber of Commerce started a youngish professionals networking event. It's been meeting at Thunder Brothers from four to seven on the third Wednesday of every month. Any ages welcome. They have been getting a great attendance and numbers of over fifty people, so it's been well attended and promotes relationships within our community. If anyone's interested, they can reach out to Councilmember Merrill for more information. For the school board, moving forward transition fair by Dave Kaufman spoke about this and the resources that families and students fourteen up, ages fourteen up have. The goal of the program is to help ease the gap between school and adulthood and independence. So if anyone's interested in our community that needs help with that, to reach out to Dave Kaufman. Fast bridge testing is being done at the school to try and assist in recognizing students that may need a little more help. Fred Nolan with, from Blue Jacket Education Foundation made a short presentation. Teachers applied for grants through this program and were awarded almost ten thousand dollars in total. With that money, the art department at the high school received five digital cameras. I M S received a Lego program. I M S also was Susan Casper, the gym teacher, wanted to bring an archery to her classroom, and she got a grant for bows and arrows. Grow lights were purchased for another class. Broadcasting class with Jim Godfrey got a grant for a drone. The Future Fest fundraiser hosted by the Blue Jacket Education Foundation is slated for April nineteenth. It's similar to a pep fest, so dress up in your Cambridge Isanty gear, and it's at the Circle B Ranch in Isanty. And then lastly, the school district financial audit presentation, M M K R, is the audit company. Results came back clear with no compliance or control issues. School district spent roughly sixty-five million dollars in twenty twenty-three school year. Fund balance, which is basically a slush fund for the what-if situations, is at twenty-two point seven million, which is a lot higher than it's ever been.
Thank you, Josie. All right. No other committee reports? We'll go ahead and move on to business items here. K one, interviewing the applicant for the vacant parks and recreation board seat. All right, yeah, if you want to go ahead and come on up, you're gonna have to help me with your first name, so. Shakaria, okay. All right, well Shakaria, well, thank you for applying, and, and I suppose we need her name and address for the record at all? No? Okay. All right, so we're just gonna ask you some, some questions here, and, and then at the end, if you guys have anything you want to ask and chime in with, that'd be great, so. If you can, just tell us about yourself and why the council should consider you for the Park and Recreation Board seat.
Sure. I'm married and share three beautiful children with my husband. We are newer residents to the city of Isanty. We moved into our new home back in June of two thousand and twenty-two. My family enjoys the outdoors, riding on the trails and walking and visiting local parks for fun and adventures. The council should consider me for a spot on the board because I am, I have a desire to make sure that everyone in this community feels that they have a safe and fun place that they can dwell in and enjoy.
All right. And do you have experience being a Park and Recreation Board member or a similar experience that would help you in this role?
This is my first opportunity, being a member on the Parks and Recreation Board. However, I have a background in marketing, project management, creative thinking, and I have great people skills to support in my role on this board.
All right. What do you feel is the most important role and the purpose of the Parks and Recreation Board in our community?
I feel the most important role of the board is to advocate and provide quality and safe experiences for our community. The purpose of the board is to ensure that the community, to ensure that the community, there is always a continuous evolving team of supporters who seek out opportunities for improvement and growth.
Okay. And what do you believe are the top priorities for the city's current park system?
I'm sorry, can you ask the question again?
Yeah, you bet. What do you believe are the top priorities for the city's current park system?
Just wanna find my answer. What question is that?
Number four.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I believe the top priorities are to ensure safety, create and maintain healthy and family oriented atmospheres, and lastly, to provide positive experiences.
Okay. And do you have experience in long range planning? Please explain.
I have previous experience in planning long term, short term, marketing events and functions. As the assistant director for a school, I have experience with booking vendors, setting up fundraising opportunities, as well as obtaining donations for events and activities.
Okay. The Park and Recreation Board reviews and makes recommendations on the overall planning, management, and policies of our park system to the city council. How do you plan to tie that into the overall goals of the city council?
As a mother with children who love to visit Bluebird Park and other nearby attractions, I get to see and enjoy things, see how things work. And my children never mind sharing how they feel and enjoy things. Any decision or recommendation I would be contributing would be firsthand experience and knowledge in using the local park system.
Sounds good. And if you could bring a new or enhanced feature, event, or service to our park system, what would that be?
A new feature I would like to see added to our park system would be an outdoor splash pad for water play and more summertime fun for families, such as movies in the park night, and possibly doing food trucks opportunities for family and to create and build more revenue for our local businesses.
Okay. The Park and Recreation Board typically meets the fourth Tuesday of the month at six P M. Does that fit into your other time commitments?
Yes.
Okay. And is there anything else that you'd like to add to assist us in considering you as a park board candidate?
Yes. I have great determination and motivation and would enjoy to channel that energy towards working together to improve our park and recreation system, given the opportunity. Thank you for inviting me here tonight.
Thank you for coming. Any, any other questions you guys have? Awesome. Well, thank you, Shakaria.
Thank you.
All right.
I make a motion to approve.
Is this our last spot?
I believe it is our last spot, yeah. Yep.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve Shakaria on the park board from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries four zero. Congratulations. Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, welcome aboard.
All right, so we'll move on to the new K two, which is discussion on the property that's located at two seven eight six eight Polk Street Northeast. And I guess I'm kind of the one that added this, but I don't know, Stephanie, if you want to kind of give us a little bit of a backstory here, and I don't know if we, do we have the gentleman that was interested in, okay. Do you, do you maybe want to come up and, and we'll let Stephanie kind of maybe give us an introduction a little bit, and then, and then we can ask you a few questions, or you can ask us questions, and we can kind of take it from there, so.
We had a request from a potential resident purchasing the property at two seven eight six eight Polk Street Northeast, which is a thirty acre parcel at the south end, end of town, just north of the Circle B Ranch. It is a single family home in the R one A rural residential district, and the request is just zoning uses, I guess, specifically cattle or cows, if that would be allowed on the property, otherwise considering deannexation from the city.
I have a question. How, how did that property get annexed in the first place?
The property was annexed in with the Circle B Ranch, or the, when the Cox family wanted to make that a recreational commercial property, which wasn't a zone, wasn't allowed, the zoning wasn't allowed in the township. So needed to zone that property within the city limits. So as part of that annexation, the adjoining property to the north was needed to connect the parcels at the time, so.
So they're connected now?
Yes.
So they would have to be split back up?
They're two separate parcels, but that parcel was used to connect the parcel with the barn, I guess, the wedding venue, thank you, to the city, which is the one that needed the recreational commercial designation because it wasn't allowed in the zoning, in the township for that use. But there is a parcel to the west, sorry, had to game off.
That parcel that we're talking about? Oh, so it's completely other side of the road?
No.
This is the barn. This is the wedding venue.
Okay.
This is the parcel that he's
Okay.
And this is the railroad.
Okay. I got my bearings now on that.
I got a better map here for you, if you'd like to see. You guys want to take a look at that map at all, or? Yeah, I know where it is, but.
There is a parcel, the parcel to the east does allow, if he did request to be deannexed, it does continue to, or connect that wedding venue to the city still, so it would remain connected.
To the east or to the west?
It actually, or sorry, to the west.
Okay.
That's on the verified, like, east is the other side of the road.
To the west. So it's actually a little sliver that's to the north of the parcel.
I just want to clarify something. When they came in and asked to be annexed in, and it was explained to me many predecessors ago, that that was cornered, that would be the west corner, northwest corner of that property was touching city property. And I brought it up at that time, and Mr. Burgley was on the council at that time. That gentleman Cox wanted that annexed in the city. Part of the problem was that the township wasn't going to give him the right to have that wedding venue. And I cautioned on that, that whole time. I said, I, if he wants to be annexed in, that's fine. But I said, what about the rest of the properties between the city limits and that? And it was stated at that time, only if they requested to be annexed in. And I think when all that other annexations came through, that was part of that issue. And I, I said that from the minute the get-go, it was gonna be a nightmare when that property got annexed in.
Well, personally, my, I, I have a very opinionated opinion on this one.
And, and you know how I stood on that whole thing?
Sure. I, I can't see why a forty acre piece of property is inside city limits, and, and you can't do anything with it. You know, I was in the same situation. I had six acres, and when I got annexed, not by choice, I said, well, I can't do anything with this property, other than watch it grass grow and wait for the city to give me a ticket if I don't mow it. I mean, you got thirty acres, I mean, you, you should be able to do what you want with that property. Put some cattle on it, some horses on it, farm it. And you shouldn't have to conform to city regulations. That's my opinion, and I, I would, my vote would be definitely to unannex them. If, if we were talking a small piece of property, I might consider something different, but that's a large piece of property to sit there and not be able to do anything with, and it could be years. You know, there'll be, there'll be a time, probably, in my position, I've been in the city, well, only for about six years, but I've lived in my place for thirty-five years, and I bought it when I was in my twenties and hoped to develop it someday. And I never thought the city would make me become city before the opportunity arose, or, or the conditions were right for me to develop it. And then, of course, I would annex either for a commercial or, or to develop it. And I, and I believe every resident should have that choice and not be told they don't. So that's where I lay on it. Here's your paperwork.
Would you mind stating your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Mike Langley, two three five three one, Devonport Street, Northeast, East Bethel.
So, yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's really the question. I mean, we're, at least for myself and, and talking, I think, you know, we'd like you to be able to use it for however you see fit, and you haven't actually purchased the property yet, right? So you're kind of wanting to see.
I want to make an offer if it's gonna be.
Yeah, right. You kind of wanted to see if we're gonna be workable with you, so, yeah, I mean, I think, I would be okay, because, I mean, it's not even, it's not gonna create a donut hole or anything like that, you know, being open on that one side.
I, I got something highlighted on there. If you want to look at it, kind of, there's like, where it'd still be within city limits if you, or it wouldn't, you wouldn't hurt the Circle B Ranch, basically.
Yeah.
It would still connect to the property that's city limits on the other side of the tracks.
Right, yep. Yeah, and I, and that's what I think, it makes it easier for us to, to give you more of an option of annexa, or deannexation, I should say. But, I mean, if you wanted, is that what you prefer to do for sure, would be that, or?
Deannex, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Because, I mean, otherwise, we can work with you, because I know there's a whole process that, that Stephanie had kind of outlined with me, and I was talking to her earlier, as far as going, getting state approval to get the deannexation and all that kind of stuff. But, you know, otherwise, what we can do, too, is we can create language in our, in our, you know, R one A district there that would allow you to do that use, too. So there's, there's really two options there, but we would work with you, at least as, as far as I can, can say I'd work with you either way, so.
You know, that language might not, i- i- if we can swing that, and he can have, you know, pretty much full use of his property, you might want to consider that, too, because that piece of property, looking at it, that's ripe to be developed. I mean, I could see a developer come in there and put forty houses. I mean, you'll be doing well in another twenty years when the economy changes back around, so.
I just don't, I just, my concern, my concern is legally, through an attorney, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know what our ramifications would be from our, from, from the attorney's point of annexing, deannexing, you know, annexing back and forth, back and forth. You, you start setting a precedent, the next, next thing you know, you got someplace that wants to be deannexed because it's, that even wasn't even forced in the annexation. I'm not just keeping that in mind. I don't want to set a precedent for that.
I understand exactly what you're saying, Steve.
And I don't disagree with.
We've already done it. We've already done it with the ten acres by the golf course. He, he asked to be annexed, and he was gonna have people come in and develop. This was like seven, eight months ago. He came in and we unannexed him. He finally gave up. The development that he was gonna do fell through, and he wanted to turn his property back into farm and, you know, do some farming again on it, but he couldn't because of city regulation, and we all voted at that time to unannex him. So he's already been annexed and unannexed once, so.
And that was a similar situation, too, where it wasn't like it was in the center of the city or something, where we're, okay, this lot's not part of the city anymore. Like, we don't want to do that, obviously, but, but with this, it's similar to what we had done.
What I was just referring to, and I don't disagree with Mr. Heeman on this, you know, that thirty acres is a big chunk of property.
It is.
And it's not like it's an industrial park or anything. I totally understand that. I just want to make sure we're not gonna have some other ramifications that we're gonna regret down the road.
I don't think we will. I pretty much learned that whole process, process inside and out because I had to go through it. I mean, administrator judge could maybe see something that I can't think of, but I don't think there's gonna be any problem. Usually, if the city agrees, the township agrees. Township isn't gonna not disagree. They're gonna want the tax base back. But we can also look into changing ordinances, too. I mean, and I can't see it just for one piece of property, though. I mean, it should be more uniform.
Well, I mean, I think that, that district, we already have kind of a carve out for, was it forty acres, where we allowed them to do horse boarding and stuff like that, if it was forty acres. I mean, you basically would just have to change a little of that language around to allow for what he was doing, too, so. So, yes, I mean, I think e- either way, we could make it work for you, I think, and, and we'd, you know, but.
What exactly do you want to do with it?
I don't know. Raise goats, pigs, I mean, anything out there. My wife just, she wants a hobby farm, you know.
Sure.
We've been looking for a while, and it's a perfect location.
Well, if you feel comfortable with, with what you heard, you could make a purchase agreement, I would think, and I'm sure we'll work with you one way or the other.
Well, Jeff, where you, what do you?
Yeah, where do you stand on it?
If you want to be deannexed, that's fine, as long as it's not gonna interfere with the ranch or the wedding venue or whatever the original agreement was. I would be one, I would have wanted to be deannexed, too, to be honest with you, so.
Yeah, and I would guess that Luke probably would be on somewhat of a similar page, so. Yeah, I think, no matter what you decide, we'd, we'd be able to make it work one way or another for you, I think, so.
Okay, appreciate it, guys.
You, you want that back?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for coming in, and, and hopefully that gives you some, a little sense of direction, anyway, so, yeah. All right, we'll move on to what is K three now, which will be the resolution to consider authorizing an ad for a bid for the twenty twenty-four pavement an ad for a bid for the 2024 pavement management project.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is just proceeding on to the next step for our pavement management program that we've been doing for years. We've developed the plans as directed, and it's just time to take it out for bids. I think we would anticipate doing a bid opening near the end of February, and being able to bring those bid results to that first meeting in March, to be able to determine if we can keep moving.
Awesome.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundine, and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries four zero. Moving on to K four, the ordinance to amend chapter two sixty-four, the shade tree disease.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, so it was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting on January sixteenth, to make some amendments to our chapter two sixty-four. This was in response to, with having a more prevalent exposure within our jurisdiction of Emerald Ashboro, that what the city was going to do with it, and the determination from the committee was to not be more restrictive than state statute. Residents will still have to follow state statute if there's a nuisance or violation, and we still do have our chapter two sixteen that covers nuisances for public safety and welfare, so if there's something that's going to fall on a street, we can still do something about it. So what we did here is we made amendments to the chapter, you can see within your packet that it has quite a few sections that have been stricken from this chapter, and that would be sections two sixty-four point dash four, two sixty-four dash five, two sixty-four dash six, seven, eight, nine, and eleven, and twelve. There have been some other slight modifications to the other sections, just to make sure that everything is congruent within it, makes sense, and doesn't conflict within other sections. As I mentioned, if there does become a problem with a diseased tree, and it is affecting the health and safety of our residents, then city staff will be going through chapter two sixteen to make those processes that we have to do.
Right, we still, it still leaves the option open in case we need it for public safety, but it doesn't force us to go on to private property and remove trees, which is-
It doesn't force us, and it also makes it the homeowner's responsibility, which that has been the practice within the city here, is if the tree's on your property in the right of way, it is still your responsibility to take care, so it doesn't become a cost burn to the city. If they need to do something about it, they're going to need to take that cost on.
All right, any questions on that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Heeman, and a second from Councilman Lundine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries four zero. Moving on to K five, the resolution to approve the special event permit for Rum River BMX Governor's Cup Event.
Good evening, Mayor and council, this is for the Governor's Cup BMX event, held at the ICANDI indoor arena. This event usually doesn't require a special event permit, but due to the overwhelming response of attendees, now being at over twenty-five hundred, they realized they needed more parking, so that's why they submitted a special event permit request. So it will be held on February seventeenth and, sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth. And will, as expected, host twenty-five hundred people. Really, they're requesting for us, in the event of snow, for the soccer complex parking lot to be plowed. And just for the use of that, they did get approval from the soccer association. Public Works Director Sylvester did give his approval, but he did say that the parking lot will not be the main priority if there is a snow event, but they will plow it when they have the opportunity to. So all other department heads did agree and approve this permit.
I make a motion to approve, and I just want to state that that Rum River BMX has been a huge asset to the city. They've done nothing but outstanding things there, they've always agreed upon everything we've asked them. I, I don't want to ever hold those people's hands back.
I agree.
I've never been to one, but I know people that have, and they, they love it, and, and it's a great, great, great asset.
Yeah, it is. I like watching the older, the older group go. When they hit, they hit hard, so.
I like watching the little kids, and they, they don't even have pedals yet, and they just- riders, yeah. Yeah, it's fun for all ages, that's for sure, so.
I'll second.
All right.
George did, George seconded.
Did you second it already? Okay.
I have over rolled them.
All, all right, I've got a motion to approve the special event per-, permit for the BMX Governor's Cup event from Councilman Lundine, and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries four zero. Moving on to K six, the, this will be a discussion on chapter two fifty-six, residential and non-residential property maintenance and standards discussion, so. You guys want to kick this off, or you want me to?
You can.
Okay. So really, I mean, this is not, I'm not looking at a broad discussion on this, really, I just, we had an issue come up with a rental property, where they were trying to make the property owner put in a different locking device. They wanted a deadbolt, a deadlocking bolt is what the language actually says in our ordinance here. And the picture that you've got in front of you there is what they're, they have for a lock, and that's, they've been renting the property, I want to say maybe twenty years, something like that, they said, and it's always been fine with this lock. So, and their doors are not drilled for a normal deadbolt lock. I mean, to me, when I'm looking at this picture, and Steve, just by looking at your face, I'm guessing you're thinking the same way that I am, is that, that sure looks like it satisfies the intent of the, the language there? Yeah? So, so anyway, I guess I'm wondering, what do we need to change in that language? Should we say, if you look at, if you're looking at that, that third attachment there, it's like two fifty-six dash nine, eleven, and eleven A is the section that we're talking about? And I'm thinking maybe we can just put a deadlocking bolt, or similar lock, and that would make it vague enough to where that would qualify?
Or a second lock.
Yeah, yeah, or just, so, yeah, that would work too, I guess, right?
Or an antique lock.
I just look at, they lived there for twenty years, and they've had been, and they've, they've been satisfied with it. I hate to say it, it doesn't take much to put a second hole in your door, especially that-
I know, I know.
But I, I will tell you this, even if they put a deadbolt in there, that door ain't going to last a kick. So, so where do you, where do you draw the line?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, next thing you know, you're going to tell them they got to start putting steel reinforced doors in, I mean, I-
And I'm not faulting Rum River, I mean, that's who, who we have doing our, our rental inspections right now. Their, their job is to follow the letter of the law, right? So I mean, it's, it's our job to, to put the language in there that, that we expect them to follow, so.
If I can just speak on that a little bit. So in the previous inspections that I did look for this, it was conducted by community development staff, and then in twenty twenty two to twenty twenty-three, we did decide and make the change that the building officials should be conducting all rental inspections, just because of things like this getting passed on, that the community development staff or laymen, people who aren't, you know, as fluent in building code standards might miss. And so, with the recommendation of Rum River consultants is to, and has been since we started consulting with them, or contracting with them for rental inspections, is to adopt the IPMC, which is what I put in your, in the packet, just for reference, and that's what most cities around the state and the country use for their rental standards. And so, in that standard, it specifically doesn't allow a sliding bolt lock, which is what is shown in the picture. It calls it out in there. Sorry, I'm pulling it up. Just for dwelling unit doors, that such deadbolt lock shall be installed according to the manufacturer specifications, and in good work, working order, and requires a need for keys from the exterior. For the purpose of this section, a sliding bolt shall not be considered an acceptable deadbolt lock, because the two, it's as good as the two screws that are holding it in, is basically what it's, what they had said.
And I don't think we have that here.
We do not have that in our code yet, but this is what they-
Well, right, but I mean, I'm saying, I don't think, I don't think we have that in our attachments here.
It's just, I just linked it, because we don't have access to it, I could only link it into the memo, because it's like
Oh, I see, I got you.
Sorry.
I see, you got the link there, okay, gotcha.
But that's the whole code that they would like us to adopt, and we can make our own amendments to that code, so if that's part that you would like us to not adopt, it is something we believe we should be adopting, so that we're following more closely with state and federal regulations. A lot of cities had their own rental codes created, which is a hodgepodge of different cities and other rental codes, and so this is the standard now. And it is something that they have been recommending, and was something we were going to discuss later, after we went through this round of rental inspections. So just something to consider also, is that we likely could be adopting this, and if that's something that maybe we should look into sooner, and what amendments we would make to that code, to better fit ICANDI.
So I guess, I mean, I'm kind of going the opposite way, in that I was just going to also ask if there was any interest in us having the community development team start to do the inspections again, because I think a layperson, for all intents and purposes, is going to catch, catch the things that need to be caught, and they're not going to catch the things that really are not something that's probably all that big of a concern, so.
But, and I was thinking too, when you talked about that, they've been renting from this guy for twenty years.
Yeah.
I think the guy could afford to bring in and put a different deadbolt in there.
I mean, but I'm not, yeah, I mean, I get what you're saying, but I mean,
It's like-
But I mean, that, that satisfies what I think we, in, in our ordinance,
Yeah.
That satisfies what, what they're trying to say, I mean, it says it can't be pushed in from the end, which if you push that over, it, it can't be pushed in from the end, it has to be able to be undone from inside without the use of a key. It satisfies that, you know, so. So yeah, I'd-
I'm torn on that, because it's, to me, rental inspections are more health, safety concerned, you know.
Oh, and I get that, yeah, and I'm not-
That's what that is.
And I, and I'm fine, I, I don't think you guys want to take over the inspections again, right? We don't have time for that, so.
We just don't have the staff.
Yeah, so, but I'm not, I'm not in favor of adopting more, more strict language, I think our stuff is, is fine, and we have a lot of references to state statute as well in, in our language, so. I think we're just fine there, but I would like to change this to, to to allow for this type of lock to, to be satisfactory for that section, so. So, like I said, I think, I think it satisfies that already, but it, you know, maybe a, a technical definition of a deadlocking bolt, I guess. Maybe it doesn't technically meet that definition, but.
A deadlocking bolt is a, a, the dead part requires a key from the outside. So the lock has to be keyed from the outside, or with a turning movement.
Well, that's a, a deadbolt lock, is that a deadlocking bolt?
That's the dead part of it.
I know, but you see what I'm, see, our language says a deadlocking bolt. But even like this, because that's what I was trying to figure out too, is, so like this definition that you sent here, it says, what is a deadbolt lock? Well, our language doesn't say a deadbolt lock, it says a deadlocking bolt, so is that the same thing, or is that something different?
All of the research I've done is the dead part is meaning that you can't access it, like, you have to be able to access it from the exterior with a key, so.
Okay.
I'm okay with the, with this lock, how do we change the language, or just make it-
That would be to-
I, I just, you, nobody's going to have a key
Right.
to get in there from the outside, the police department is going to have a key.
Exactly, either way, they're kicking it in.
They're going to kick it in.
Either way.
I mean, I just, I just look at it this way, and then on this other pages, they show, they show a double cylinder deadbolt, where you have to have a key inside and out, actually, that to me is more unsafe.
And you're not, you're not allowed in this code to have that, because-
But it says you can, but the key has to be within-
Well, okay.
But you know what I'm getting at?
Yeah.
To me, that's, that is totally unsafe, because if you have to escape, and you don't know exactly where that key is, you don't have that much time to go looking for it.
I, I agree, in fact, that, that should be, if we're going to tell people what to do, they shouldn't have a deadbolt where you need a key to access it from the inside, that-
That is not allowed in our-
Oh, okay.
But I think, I, I, I agree with these guys, I think that's, as far as I'm concerned, it sets the intent, purpose of it. And if you're not home, you're not locking that anyway, so that's, you know, because you can't.
So that would be to allow a sliding bolt lock. That is the kind of lock this is.
Yeah, so we could just call, we could just do that, so let's say, so section eleven A, so with an approved lock that has a deadlocking bolt, or sliding bolt lock, that cannot be retracted by end pressure, provided, so they just want to add that language to it?
Okay.
That would solve that problem, okay. All right, so I imagine we'll have to bring that back again for
Yes.
other consideration in the future, but. Okay. All right, so yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll make a final motion on that, when, when we've got those changes made, and we've got it posted, and ready to go, so, thank you, guys. Let's see, so we're going to move on now, I guess we're at the consent agenda, any, any questions on that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Councilman Lundine, and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries four zero. And I think the last thing on our list here was just kind of a review after the meeting, or, or just kind of there for us to review, and if any, any comments or concerns on the conflict of interest policy. Okay?
Just for information, and then you have it at your, at your seat there to complete, as we do annually.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Lundine, and a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries four zero, we are adjourned.